Good evening. It is 6:00 PM. This is the regular business meeting of the Sandwich School Committee. We will begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free and just for all.
Again, good evening. A reminder to all that this meeting is being broadcast on Sandwich Community Television livestream at www.sandwichtv.org and Sandwich Community TV Education Channel 8. We will begin with our first public forum of the evening. Would anybody like to come forward for public forum? Seeing none, move on. Next is review and act on our meeting minutes of our regular business meeting of August 27, 2025.
I make a motion that we approve the business meeting minutes from our August 27, 2025 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Minetta, second by Ms. Miller. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Pass 7-0. Next up is correspondence and announcements. I have none unless anybody else says anything. Okay. Seeing none, moving on to superintendent's update. Dr. Murscheck.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Great to see everybody. Welcome to day seven of the school year. So far, so good. You know, I'm really pleased that our opening has been as smooth as possibly can be. These are some photos from opening day in all three schools. We're really pleased that we had, at the Oak Ridge School, a nice contingency of Sandwich Police, you know, Officer Badaranko, our SROs, Sergeant Gregenko, greeting, high-fiving the kids, a lot of smiling faces, a lot of positive feedback, particularly from Oak Ridge. They did a meeting for parents in advance of the opening, you know, just to kind of, for students and for newer parents, to quell any anxieties that were present. I took a picture of the courtyard. Again, I can't give enough props to Bobby and Caitlin Morris from Coastal Roots, just the attention to detail, both at Forestale and at Oak Ridge. So, really, really pleased to partner with them. More photos from Oak Ridge. Our tech teacher, Amy, took these different shots, which I think kind of captured, you know, the opening day vibe. I do want to point out, one of the pieces in our strategic plan is kind of having the Blue Knight identity all throughout the schools. Our art teachers at Oak Ridge have started a contest to kind of have posters throughout the building with, you know, relating Oak Ridge to that Blue Knight identity. I think we've got some really, really talented artists. I'm a little biased to one on the far right by Vera, but, you know, they're all outstanding artworks. And I actually have a whole Google Drive folder of different artworks. So, just kind of interesting. I think at the high school, we also had a lot of activities that were very interesting. Correct me if I'm wrong, Genie. It was on Friday where the seniors had their usual annual picnic, senior picnic, at Camp Burgess. They also did, at Town Neck Beach, the aerial drone shot that we do every year. You probably did it back in the day, maybe not with a drone, but for the class of 26. And then hats off to Genie and the admin team for freshmen and sophomores. They kind of did a fun little novel game with the student handbook, where the kids actually played Family Feud, answering questions having to do with the student handbook. That totally beats the principal or the assistant principal, kind of giving the drill sergeant routine going over the key rules. So, very, very positive. I do want to note, at Forestale, also a very, very smooth transition. I was there on opening day and also the second day, which is the opening day for our kindergarten students. Realize, and I know Jen was here at the last meeting, the additional support we had for the Ride the Wave program. We had, of the 160 students that are in this year's kindergarten class, 102 of them participated in the Ride the Wave to kindergarten two-day program. So, that's tremendous, thinking about just a transition for students and their families to a new school community. So, kudos to Mr. D. and the staff there for that work. So, my second piece, as I typically do during this meeting, is just kind of look at that opening snapshot, realize where we are with regard to enrollment. We generally don't have a lot of movement between now and then the official October 1 enrollment. But right now, it stands at district-wide, we are at 2,131 students, which breaks down to 562 at Forestale, 661 at Oak Ridge, 877 at the high school, and then 31 out of district placements for your total. I think I said during the budget process that we were, again, expecting it to be fairly stable. So, if you compare those numbers to where we were for our official October 1 numbers last year, we have 18 fewer students than we did then. That is a little less than one percentage point fewer, so 0.8%. If you were to take the number of sections that we have across the board in K through 8 and divide them by what is the current enrollment, you see, give or take, what the average class size is. I do think we're in a very, very good place. When you take a look at, you know, early elementary, early childhood, K through 2, you want them in that 15 to 17, 18 range, where exactly they are. Then 3 through 6, you're basically in the ballpark of low 20s. And then the same for grades 7 and 8. I think, as I say in the background notes, you know, right now, this first week or two, you still have the most shuffling of schedules at the high school. For our next meeting, I'll do, like I did last year, by department, what our average class sizes are at the high school level. Something that I do want to point out is...
I'm sorry.
Dr. Miller.
Could we also know what the average class size across APs are by department?
Absolutely.
If you could pull that out?
Sure.
The department reports.
Absolutely. So, we, you know, it's always a balance with regard to school choice. Last year, pretty consistently, we were at 135 students choicing in. We are now at 163. We're pretty much capping it there. Realize we probably have about another 30 students on the waitlist. Overwhelmingly, that is at the elementary grades. Overwhelmingly, it's K and 1 is where we've got some of the biggest limitations. Again, you have to be very strategic as far as the places that, you know, you're enrolling those students. But that should be beneficial for us as far as using those choice funds. I'm anticipating will be fairly stable as far as the number of students choicing out, probably a slight decline. Last year, we were around 50 students choicing out. I'm estimating it to be maybe around 45 students choicing out.
Where do they go?
A whole variety of places, many of which are off Cape, a decent amount in Plymouth, some to Barnstable.
They would go to Barnstable?
Well, realize, when you kind of unearth and you kind of look at the stories, a lot of times, the parent may be a teacher, and for the sake of childcare and so on, they go in in the morning with the parent. It could be work-related and so on.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are you done with that? With that whole thing?
Yes, I am.
I got a quick question.
Well, I'm not done yet.
Okay.
You said, as far as the 8th graders and going into the high school, you said it represents a 33% reduction in a single cohort of students. This is not positive data, nor is it sustainable. Can you elaborate more on sustainable?
So, my concern is this. Look at this chart, Bert, and look at that 11th grade class of 106. The only happy thing that I can report about that is, in 2027, that'll probably be a really quick graduation class, graduation ceremony. But if we think about the viability of high school and being able to offer many different things to many different kids, think about, to Sue's earlier question, AP coursework. Think about the conversations that we've had here at the table about extra and co-curricular activities. Think about the various sports that we're fortunate enough to offer. If you were to take four classes across the high school and they're in the ballpark of either your freshman class or that junior class, you're now talking about a high school that's, what, in the low 400s? Or 400 to 450? That has dramatic effects as far as the feasibility of being able to offer a rich and diverse array of offerings to students.
So, you have five-year plans and 10-year plans and maybe 50-year plans. How, this is a problem right here, as you have identified. What are the plans to handle that problem? Because that 106, it is going to be a quick graduation. That's 40 kids less than the 12th grade this year. What are the plans to address that?
So, in probably about 10 minutes, when we go over what the district action plans are for this year, we are establishing a district-wide climate committee of different stakeholders. And part of it is looking at all of that exit data and having a systematic approach of collecting data, but also doing focus groups and speaking directly with students and families.
It seems like the 11th grade class, I thought they were almost close to 120 last year, 117 maybe?
They started at 113.
113?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I remember two years ago...
Because they've always been the smallest class.
...dressing over like, oh, my god, like, they're at 113. And you got to realize, and again, when you call that data and you go into what, Upper Cape Tech and Sturgis, you know, a span of five to seven years ago, you had, you averaged around 200 kiddos per class at Oak Ridge, okay? Now, you're kind of averaging about 160. So, you know, you're always going to have a certain attrition rate. And hey, God bless the electricians and the plumbers and so on. I get all those pieces. You're never going to completely ameliorate those effects of students looking for other options. My concern is if there is something, if needs are not being met, whether they're academic or social-emotional, and we're losing students and families, we need to address it.
Dr. Miller.
And then are there also opportunities on the other side to, I hate to use the word "marketing", but to showcase in a more direct way some kind of programming that would catch the eye of families, of juniors and seniors in terms of college prep, post-high school prep, job-to-careers, innovative pathways? You know?
All of the above.
I mean, it's not easy for a high school student to transfer as a junior, but if there's opportunity, then there may be.
Oh, in coming in?
In coming in.
Yeah. I definitely think that is the case. And I know, under Genie's leadership, there is a philosophy of around taking students in, absolutely. And there are stories, you know, part of that 9th grade class represents 10 new students. And some of those students are students who've come back to us from, you know, places like John Paul II and so on.
But I think that, obviously, you can't go to solutions until you've assessed the data. But in terms of providing rigorous academic opportunities and co-curricular opportunities, partnerships and collaborations, digital access to courses and whatnot, so there's a lot that can be done that won't dilute the offerings, but may reduce the cost of how you deliver the offerings.
Sure.
Not to put you on the spot, I don't think you have a slide. The number of going to UCT seems, if I'm not mistaken, there was a pretty good jump last year.
It's a bigger jump this year.
Okay. There might be more than, there might be some economic pieces to that, too.
Sure.
Just when people think about college costs and what some of the trades can make these years.
Absolutely.
I won't claim to have any answers right now. Any other questions on that?
And I think it's, we typically do, Dave is here to talk a little bit about the summer professional development that was offered within the district.
Just a joke, small joke. Very tight agenda today, so I'll try to keep it that way as well. So, I'm pleased to, if we go to the next slide. So, pleased to offer 15 different types of PD offerings this summer, that range from attending short, one- to two-day conferences to posting graduate courses from Fitchburg and Bridgewater State, online courses that take advantage of the technology and making it easier for teachers to get access to graduate credits, but also courses that help them improve teaching and learning for students. But some of the featured ones, I just want to highlight that we had on campus. So, if you go to the next slide. We were pleased to welcome back Dr. Scott MacLeod from the University of Colorado Denver. This is his third time in district, working with teachers on deeper learning and redesigning lessons to make them more authentic, give students more choice over what they're learning, engage more deeply with the content, and then purposely use technology. The one thing that we did differently this year is that, as a leadership team, we met with Dr. MacLeod for a full-day seminar with our coaches and our department heads to talk about what the vision is for our students in relation to our strategic plan and how to tie that in and support deeper learning for teachers. The other thing that we do, and I think it's a good outreach, and Dr. Miller, kind of going back to your marketing component, is that we offer open seats to districts, folks from other districts. So, representatives from Harvard, and we had an entire team from North Attleboro come up to attend this PD, and they were really excited. So, it creates new ways to collaborate with other districts to reduce costs for PD. So, we're really proud of that as well. We'll be continuing on with Dr. MacLeod over the course of the year. And some of our building principals are writing goals around deeper learning. As is a staple for every year, we also offer skillful teacher in responsive classroom. It's adjusted a little bit. Skillful teacher, we now do in conjunction with Plymouth Public Schools. We don't have quite enough teachers to run a full session. It usually takes about 25. Responsive classroom, very similarly. We're taking advantage of their online offerings, but we also offer teachers the opportunity to take the in-person classes at places like Needham High School, or Needham Public Schools, I believe is one area. Foxborough usually runs a session as well. So, we're continuing to offer it to teachers, but it just looks a little bit different. Another PD opportunity that we had was earlier at this leadership team retreat. We're partnering with the Chapman Foundation for Caring Communities. The Chapman Foundation was founded by a gentleman, Bob Chapman. You may recognize the name from the strategic plan. Talks a lot about truly human leadership. His work has been featured in books by Simon Sinek, and he's spoken at the UN. And his business was the subject of Harvard Business Review case. That's one of the most downloaded on the site. But what he really focuses on is helping communities, organizations to better communicate with one another. And one of those ways that they do it is through something called the DISC assessment, where participants take a survey that helps them to better understand how it is that they communicate and then walk through how maybe your colleagues communicate a little differently. So, I happen to be more, what they call is an I and influence, which is like high trust, high relational. Some of our colleagues are, many of my colleagues are in that C group, which is very curious and questioning, more task-oriented. And so, what we did was, we spent time as a leadership team, thinking through both, first, you know, what are my behavioral tendencies when I communicate? But then also thinking about how do our colleagues communicate? And how might I adjust my style of communication based on what I know about my colleagues? We'll have other opportunities to work with the Chapman Foundation, as they'll talk a little bit about with our Castle partnership in the district action plan. And then a hot topic on everyone's mind is AI. So, we are continuing our work with Eric Hudson, who was originally part of the Global Online Academy, who is now doing some consulting work. We just released his four-part AI PD series that we'll have in district. It probably went out an hour or so ago, and I've already got three emails and two signups, so it'll be fill-up fast. Eric's been doing a lot of work across the country, helping schools make sense of AI and how to use it, both from like an empowering lens, but also taking a critical lens and working with teachers to both build their own proficiency, but also help students to think about how they'll be using AI in the future. And then finally, I just wanted to give a little bit of like a overview of some of the other areas in the upcoming PD. So, we've continued to work with Landmark, offering PD services for teachers there. We're also going to continue on with our trauma course through Leslie, hopefully starting up another cohort. We've got about close to 20 teachers who are signing up for that first course. We are looking at a little bit of our science curriculum review at the elementary schools, so doing some initial PD, exploring the Open SIED model. And then, as we start to think about the shifts to the new potentially teacher rubric and culture-responsive teaching, building upon the work that we've talked about with Karen White, we'll be doing a book study on culture-responsive teaching in the brain by Dr. Zaretta Hammond, kind of like the go-to book for teaching and learning around that topic. So, we're really excited to offer that. Lynn Finney from the DEIB group will be facilitating that book study. And then finally, as always, we'll have ongoing PD with I ready. We'll dial it down now as teachers are more confident and comfortable with it, but we also want to make sure that we're continuing to take advantage of the curriculum resources. And also, they have some additional interesting PD to kind of level up. So, last year, we had sessions around student discourse and math discourse. So, how are we taking kind of that initial implementation and thinking about how we want to align it to our graduate in our strategic plan?
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Fisher.
Back in the day, maybe it's still current, teachers had to earn these professional development points. Do they still have to do that?
That's correct, yes.
And was 30 points was...
Oh, it's far more than that. I think it's closer to 120.
120, I believe.
120.
With different categories, some of which...
Every year?
No, every, once they renew their license, so...
Approximately every five years, Bert.
Okay. So, this summer program, did we pay them, or did they pay us? Or how did that work out?
Them being the teachers, Mr. Fisher, or...
During the summer, you, well, I'm sure you paid the teachers that did the teaching.
Yes.
But the teachers that took the courses, did they get paid to take the course?
Sure. We offer a wide range of incentives. Some teachers opt to take it just for PDPs. In the instance of, let's just say, our deeper learning, we offer increment credits, which are salary advancement credits in addition to professional development points. So, that doesn't cost...
Step credits?
Yes, yes.
Okay. But they didn't get paid in checks? Or...
So, those teachers who weren't, who couldn't, let's say they were masters plus 60, couldn't benefit from the incentives of the graduate, like the interim credits? We did offer them curriculum hours in order to participate in that particular one, because it's a district.
But no money changed that?
Yes. So, there would be some people who would get paid to participate in that particular PD.
And how much did this whole summer program cost?
I can get you a total, gosh. Can I get back to you on the total?
Yeah, that's fine. We have another meeting in two weeks.
Yes, I'll be happy to, and I'll be happy to present or send it to you via email.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you send an email to the whole committee, then if there's follow-up questions, we can have you back in two weeks. That work for you? Email? Okay. Lots going on. Any other questions? Bert's very disappointed it wasn't 15 slides when you first put the 15. Thank you very much.
Oh, you'll be getting your 15 slides now.
Old business. Did you have anything else, Dr. Murscheck?
I do not.
Old business. Other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I have none. Moving on to new business, the 2025-26 district action plans.
Okay. So, you should have in your packet the actual district action plans document. As I typically do every year, I will, myself and Dave are going to give a concise rundown of what's contained within the document. I don't think that there's anything surprising here. And realize, what we're doing is we're building, getting now a little bit more granular on what is in the strategic plan. And if you recall, what was approved, I believe at the last meeting, as a matter of fact, the strategic plan is based upon four overarching goals or strategic objectives. You see them there, teaching and learning, supports for all students, climate and culture, slash, school and community, and facilities and capital planning. So, realize, each strategic objective is supported by specific strategic initiatives. In total, there's 23 in that entire strategic plan. I realize you're not going to work on all 23 in any given school year. So, what we've done is we've selected seven, which I'll get into. But again, I think you've seen this graphic definitely more than once. Why is this so important? I think having annual plans that schools build off of, as far as school improvement plans, also individual central office goals, school committee goals, and then from school improvement plans, your individual educator goals. It's really, really important to have that congruence, where people are kind of rowing in the same direction, so to speak. So, the seven strategic initiatives that are in the actual plan that are being addressed through action plan steps, our first implementation of having a formal curriculum review cycle. So, to our knowledge, our district has never had a formal plan to say, "Okay, every seven years, we're going to do a comprehensive look at the math curriculum or the social studies curriculum." So, we want to get that in place for all content areas. Again, continuing the work around ensuring that culturally responsive practices, inclusive practices are evident across the district in all classrooms. Again, the anti-bullying or bullying prevention piece, ensuring that we have an upstand or culture across the district, across all grade levels. What I was speaking to, as far as, in response to Bert's question, as far as collecting... What I was speaking to as far as, in response to Bert's question, as far as collecting and assessing school climate data and exit data. And then the last three, surprise, surprise, kind of speak to facilities. Updating our district's capital plan to ensure that it reflects our current needs, ensuring effective cleaning and maintenance of our facilities and our grounds, and then continuation of what I consider to be quality work that's been done over the last three years with regard to security and specifically drill planning. So those are the seven specific strategic initiatives that we're looking to address. So kind of briefly, I didn't get into every single action plan step, but some of the key actions, maybe Dave, you start with the first one?
Sure. So for the first part of the action plan, this first year with the curriculum review cycle is really essentially a planning phase. So how do we want to structure our curriculum review cycle? Is it a five-year plan? Is it a seven-year plan? What are we doing in each of those years? So that starts with forming a district-wide team to look at the structures and forming building-based teams that will help with the implementation process. We're going to design a document that will help outline each of the steps. And then by the end of the year, what we want to do is we want to identify the subject areas that will start the, identify where all of the subject areas fall within the curriculum review cycle, and then help the first content area start preparing, let's say after the first of the year, for the first stages of the curriculum review cycle. So we'll have our first review starting in '26, '27. Secondly, continuing on with our culture responsive and inclusive practices. So one of the big shifts is that we're, have an agreement in principle with the SEA to shift to the new 2024 educated rubric. As part of those conversations, we wanted to make sure that teachers are provided with exemplars of what high-quality evidence aligned to that rubric would look like, so that would be a joint process with our educators. We want to make sure that we're continuing on with our PD related to culture responsive practices. That book study, the aforementioned book study will be part of that, also continuing to work with Karen White and to give teachers more examples of what that looks like in their teaching practice. Yes.
The rubric, is that, is it the expectation of DESI that that be adopted by all districts in the Commonwealth?
Yes, however-
Will there be modification? Obviously, it's a negotiation, so.
Exactly. Yes, expectation to transition along with the expectation that it be worked, it basically be bargained with the union through joint labor management.
So, I mean, it's extensive. This is just giving the generals, the document itself will probably have some kind of scoring mechanism, et cetera, involved in it?
It's essentially the same type of mechanism that the existing rubric is, however, embeds in all the various elements throughout the standards, much more specific pieces describing culturally proficient practices.
So is there a, I guess, in terms of the teacher demonstrating, is this portfolio based, that they'll be able to put documents-
It's very similar to the existing, it's more linguistic changes than it is structural changes and how it emphasizes, what it emphasizes.
It'll be interesting to see what it looks like.
Happy to get you a copy of it.
Yeah, thank you.
Then two more things that are more of a continuation from last year, trying to develop a co-teaching institute or PD plan so that we can provide teachers with ongoing support. I think we want to shift the focus from working with external partners, who have been wonderful, but they're also tend to be retirees who then start to phase out. So we want to start to build our all internal capacity to make sure that we have training for new staff, but continual professional learning. And then again, just continuing to make sure that Wednesday PD has offerings that are related to both co-teaching and culture responsive practices.
If I could just insert myself, if you go to the actual action plan document, there's a hot link to the rubric. Okay. Yeah.
That would be part of the process of coming up with the shared understanding with the, what constitutes evidence. Yes, and that, and that wouldn't be a change necessarily from what they've, the number of pieces of evidence, the structures are basically staying the same in terms of what they've had to produce in years past. And then the third action is focused on creating the upstander culture. First, convening a team to review the Central Public Schools District Bullying and Prevention and Intervention Plan. We've done some initial work on that last year. BJ McNamara was instrumental, bringing the principals together, coming up with some initial revisions. Now we want to bring a larger group together. We also want to make sure that, you know, not just the procedures match the policies. So how do we continue to empower our peer leader programs, continue to give them the professional learning that they, well, or student learning that they need to be successful and impactful? We also want to see if we can bring coherency. There's a lot of really interesting classes that are being offered between our new kit class that's being offered to seventh grade, which replaces freshman seminar, our health class is the seven Cs class at Oak Ridge. So how can we leverage some of those courses to promote the upstander culture and really kind of get to what we've been talking about when the leading aspect of leading and learning? How can we create continuity? How might we use those classes as opportunities to teach those key skills? Finally, we also have a partnership with Castle. I'm an SEL fellow this year. Part of that work is to come up with a capstone project that has a focal point that's going to impact social, emotional learning. And we're looking at this avenue as a way to, to, as the focal point for that project. And the Chapman Foundation, which I mentioned earlier, will be helpful in bringing resources and ideas to the forefront.
So again, as I alluded to before, the fourth strategic initiative that we're tackling is around school climate data and exit data. As I said, establishing a district-wide school climate team to kind of gather a whole bunch of different sources. So think about the Panorama Survey that we currently administer at the middle high school. For our elementary students, we do something called the DESI Screener. That kind of talks about social relationships and so on, but also different surveys that we can generate internally. Collecting that data, having baseline data, but then also taking that quantitative data and mixing it with qualitative data from focus groups, from actually sitting down in person or through Zoom to talk to families and to students who've sought other opportunities. And then from that data, the so what? So kind of looking at what are some of our policies and practices where we need to improve or we need to put in interventions to kind of change the same old, same old as far as what we're doing? So then our fifth, sixth, and seventh, again, speak directly to what got a lot of attention during the strategic planning process, and that being the current status quo of our facilities. So as we know, and we discussed during and voted upon the last meeting, the plan is by the end of this month to have Habib and Associates commence a facility condition assessment of all three of our buildings. Kind of part and parcel of that, Michael Ryan, our facilities director, would also like to have an independent assessment of our grounds and our playing fields to come up with some specific turf management plan. I think also, yes.
FinCom, did they redo their vote?
I believe they did, yes. Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
No problem. And then once we have, again, the timeline is end of this calendar year, early January. Something that definitely will come back to the table will be a presentation on this assessment report. And then what is some of the thinking as far as strategizing possible solutions to the things that are identified as priority issues that we must address? Something that is a little bit weeds that's in this and another is kind of taking a long hard look at our computerized maintenance management software. We use a system called School Dude, which a lot of school districts work. And Michael has found that we're kind of not using all of the bells and whistles that are in it. And one of the bells and whistles is to have constant alerts around preventive maintenance tasks in it, so that he and his staff, by like Peter, the assistant director, but also the supervisors in each of the building can be echoed, get alerts on when these specific tasks are. Something that unfortunately was not done this year, that will be done this year, is on the 10-year capital plan, the school departments tab, we will be updating that rolling 10-year capital plan. Because realize the FinCom and also the Capital Planning Committee do look at what has been updated as far as prioritized pressing needs. Then a lot of this piece is a kind of common sense approach as far as effective cleaning and maintenance. Michael has done a yeoman's job in working with his staff to resolve all of the backlog tickets that are in School Dude. And these next four bullet points kind of speak to just feedback and accountability as far as ensuring that there is presence of custodians during the school day, ensuring that there is a cycle of feedback and accountability with regard to different shifts of custodians doing what they're supposed to be doing. Myself and Michelle Ofton have started Monday morning meetings, starting this summer, with Michael and kind of prioritizing, okay, where are we with regard to maintenance and cleaning? But then some of these larger capital projects, like the Oak Ridge HVAC and so on. So I think it's just that constant cycle of feedback and accountability is really what this is all about. And then last but not least, it is a kind of continuation of our school security and drill planning. We've kind of, we will be meeting as a district safety team for the first time a week from tomorrow. And we, at the end of last year, kind of said we need to continue the work on the evacuation drills, but not maybe this massive scale project where we're all going to Corpus Christi, thinking about maybe something on-site, thinking about the whole notion of rallying points and so on. So that work is going to commence. We've done some work in obtaining some newer technology with regard to internal alerts. For example, every single classroom in our district does have a smart board. There is a lot of great technology relating and a panic button system, an alert system that directly ties in to the smart board. So we're looking at some different solutions along that line. And then Michael, just through kind of maintenance and checks and balances, wants to ensure that all of our life safety systems are definitely tied to our emergency power. And specifically now that we have a brand-new generator at the middle high school, ensuring all of those connections are in place. So that, very quickly, is kind of the plans, the seven strategic initiatives that we want to tackle this school year. As I alluded to, I think a lot of these will come to this table for decision-making or for status update, you know, report out.
Mr. Fisher?
Thanks. Not directly related to this, but I took grandchildren to the Forestale Playground. Great playground. But the 10-year-old, who's now in fifth grade, was very comfortable with that playground, but that's a K through two playground. But I looked, my daughter saw that there was a label on one of them that it was a K through six playground. So how was it, was it, are they happy with that playground? Even though it looks like it's, because they were, these kids were very comfortable with the monkey bars, I don't know if that's what they're called today, but the monkey, the monkey bars.
Sure.
They were very comfortable with them, the playground, the swings and everything. It seemed more like a, more like an Oak Ridge, because we didn't go to the Oak Ridge, but it seemed more like an Oak Ridge playground is-
I don't think there's a dramatic difference between the Oak Ridge and the Forestale. You know, there's some differences of some equipments, but I think it's more geared towards a certain height and a certain weight of, you know, child that's playing on the equipment. And I think the, the standards aren't dramatically different between the two.
Well, it's nice, they wanted to go back. That was, it got to be an issue. They didn't want to leave. So that was-
That's a good problem to have, isn't it, Grampy?
Yes, it is, yes.
Dr. Miller?
On that note, do we keep data on injuries specific to playgrounds?
We certainly do.
And are there thresholds that trigger, you know, level of concern and action? I casually was speaking with someone recently who said there's been several injuries, I don't know numbers, but the person raised it with me, injuries on the climbing equipment in the K through, is it one or two?
K2.
K2, for the little ones, pre-K, the little ones. So, so there is. And if, I mean, what triggers a concern? This, this person was, who knows a lot about kids and little kids and preschool educator, was saying, why do you even need elevated climbing things for the little ones when there are very creative play spaces that have been designed? And my response to this was, in the building of this, experts were consulted and as plans, planning were going along. So I'm just asking the question here that-
Sure. My response to that would be, I am cognizant of all of the injuries that have occurred on that playground since it's opened. I think several we could define in a bunch of different ways. I can tell you off the top of my head, the number of injuries, I couldn't count on one hand. There was an unfortunate accident last week that required, you know, medical attention. I would say if we noted a pattern where injuries were occurring based upon one specific equipment, or it was a similar type injury, then that would be a source of concern. But I can tell you, the number of injuries that have occurred have been completely disparate.
Yeah. Just asking the question.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Higgins?
This isn't exactly related to the playgrounds, but I don't know if any of you have been at the Forestale, the preschool playground in the winter or when it rains. The water does not drain properly, and so outside of the playground, you have like essentially a pond, like-
Lake Forestale.
Yeah, at Forestale. And it becomes a solid sheet of ice when it is cold. And I don't know, I know that when we, like when the playground was redone, they were trying to fix that, but it's still an issue. And the kids are just drawn to it after school.
Sure.
So I don't know if there's a way that we can like rope it off.
I think the pressing piece, there's really two pieces here. I think we have to revisit the work that was done- I think we have to revisit the work that was done in 2023, probably not to a satisfactory degree to deal with that drainage issue because I do know firsthand, Alexis, that work was done. I don't think it was done sufficiently.
Okay.
So I think through Michael Ryan, we have to go back to the contractor, see exactly what the situation was, see what the guarantee was and so on.
Okay.
I think the second piece is if that is not successful, which I hope it will be, but if that's not successful, that's got to be something that's clearly identified in the facilities condition assessment with a specific long-term solution.
And I mean, I know during like the school hours, teachers were good about like not letting the kids.
Absolutely.
You know, so it was more of a like play at your own risk.
Yeah.
After dismissal and everything. But I do know that a lot of parents were like concerned about.
I think it's, I think it's part of a larger picture issue, kind of going back to the original construction of both schools where there's drainage issues. There's drainage issues at Oak Ridge as well.
Yeah. And I also know that the old swing set that was behind Forestale, when they removed that and they removed all that gravel, that started to flood as well. So that's just another concern that I've had, you know, parents, you know.
And that was an ongoing problem during the construction. We were under time constraints and I think that's all clay under there, isn't there?
It is.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Back to the district action plans. It does, superintendent is looking for a vote of approval?
Move to approve the district action plan as presented.
Second.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Motion by Dr. Miller, second by Ms. Goodwin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes seven zero. Other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair? I have one odd question. It's not really a topic. I know, I thought Jeannie might come up. I wasn't sure if you were coming up tonight. Why did the high school start on day seven? Silly, I know, but I just thought it was odd. I'm sure there's a reason.
That question's asked a lot, so it doesn't make sense for outside people. However, the seven-day, seven-drop-one rotating schedule was studied at length and it comes down to the total number of classes students will see teachers per semester has been calculated depending on the drop. So starting with seven ensures more equitable access to all periods.
Okay, thank you.
So this is like a math problem.
It was a math, we went and visited a bunch of high schools before we chose this schedule and the vast majority that have a seven-drop-one start with day seven, which for adults is so confusing and with open hubs coming as well, parents always ask that question. So it's a great question. And we start with day seven and then go in declining order, day seven, six.
Just couldn't wait till tomorrow night, sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I sympathize with your stress as a college educator, you know, do we have the same number of Tuesday, Thursdays, Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays only, you know? It is a math problem.
Thank you. Next up is subcommittee reports. I don't think any subcommittees have met or any subcommittees planning to meet. Dr. Miller?
I'm not suggesting that finance meet, but I would imagine we'll hear, when do we hear from Bud, like early October on, we get summoned for the tri board meeting and?
Yeah.
That's getting, it's mapped out.
More likely October.
I don't know if we want to meet in advance of that to just kind of refresh our memories about where we left off last year, what we might want to consider before we have the pressure of the schedule and the actual budgets coming together.
I think that would be wise.
So maybe we could do that, a brief meeting and everybody on finance just think about or review your notes from last year to kind of see where our major issues might be.
Okay.
Thank you.
The Cape Cod Collaborative is meeting tonight, so.
Seeing nothing else, next up is warrants.
Oh, actually, I just had a liaison.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just an update about liaison. The CPAC is hoping to hold an informal coffee on Friday, September 26th at Cafe Chu at 9:00 AM. It's just an informal meetup for anybody that may be around. And Mary-Kate Law is also trying to coordinate maybe in mid-October with a meet the new Director of People Services time with Jen Healy. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Goodwin?
Question, do we know who is taking over the wellness committee or who's going to be the lead on that?
So we did last week post Nicola's position and I anticipate one of our internal people will be taking it over. I probably shouldn't announce it in public before that's finalized, but that'll be finalized very shortly.
We'll have to wait till next meeting. Back to the warrants.
I make a motion that we approve the warrants that were signed as presented tonight. Second.
Motion by Ms. Benetta, second by Ms. Goodwin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Was that an aye?
You flinched.
So I'll go with unanimous there, seven zero. Just making sure. Next up is our second public forum of the evening. Would anybody like to come forward to speak at public forum? Mr. Holden's ignoring me, so we'll move on. Next up, future agenda items. Does anybody have anything? I have one. We talked about this briefly in the past. I know we're just into, I guess, week two. We'd like to look at bus utilization. I know we were talking about doing some surveys, looking at routes, try to make them as efficient as we could. This goes back to finance. We spend a lot of money on the buses, but if they're being undemonstrated, we might have to think of different strategies of how we can be more efficient, that's all. So, okay. Acknowledgements and closing remarks. Ms. Benetta?
I have just two quick ones. I wanted to acknowledge the admin teams, the whole district, for the new Parent Square app that's being used. I have to say, as a parent, it has been so easy to navigate and everything is right in front of you. So thank you. This is, this has made our.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Made our lives so much easier.
I think, speaking of future agenda items, what I'm going to do is maybe I'll throw it in a superintendent's report. I also want to make sure that all seven of you, you won't get tortured, but that you'll have access to the, all the various school newsletters, Blue Knight highlights and so on. Realize this, and this is kind of, irritated me initially, but I'm like, no, this is kind of brilliant. What it does, its default position is to give all emails compiled once per day, like 6:00 PM, in digest form. So you get just one email and it could be emails or notices from your kids' teachers. It all comes in one. And for years, the feedback has been, well, I got so many emails, I can't keep track, you know? So that kind of takes that away. But I've gotten, thank you for mentioning that, because I've gotten very positive feedback.
It's been wonderful. And then just one more thing, I just wanted to recognize Marty Mulroy and Peter Milburn from the KTC, they're the, on the company board and they're the co-presidents. They ran a great informational meeting the other night. I mean, they had some challenges thrown at them, seven to 10 days before school started.
Sure.
And they've just, they've handled this challenge in such a mature and professional way. They were true leaders throughout the whole process. So I just wanted to acknowledge them. Thank you.
Dr. Miller?
Is the search for the director ongoing or is it winding down?
I think we pretty much have closure. I think Jeannie will be ready to announce things very, very shortly. Let's just say we got remarkably strong applicants, a lot of connections to our community, and I think people will be really, really pleased.
You're going to have to tune into our next meeting apparently for all these announcements.
Such a teaser, right?
I anticipate in Blue Knight highlights and Castle Chronicles, do not be shocked if you see the bio and picture of folks that'll be taking it over.
Ms. Higgins first, sorry, Sue.
I also just wanted to acknowledge that the new dismissal procedure, the parking lot at Forestale, it is so much smoother than it has been in the past. It's very easy to get in and out.
Super.
Dr. Miller?
I just flew away.
I gave you the Heisman and made you forget, sorry.
It wasn't that important, sorry.
I will just announce, hopefully, I'll give Sue a second to remember, reminder that high school open house is tomorrow night.
Five to seven.
Five to 7:00 PM. See, it worked.
Came back, thank you. I noticed on the Castle Chronicles, the format's different. Did we get any positive feedback?
Yeah, so realize we, we made.
Emphasizing positive.
We made the decision, I want to say last April, May or April, through, actually through our joint labor management committee, to go to Parent Square because we wanted one universal communication tool. However, realize with regard to digital accessibility, it's also superior to a lot of the tools, including that small newsletter that we were using. So, you know, we still are learning, we still have a little bit of a learning curve, but yes, I think it's a positive tool.
I'll just, I'm getting used to the new platform and everything else. I would just note maybe for Jeannie and to relate to Sean, like I got the email at 6:14 to tell me, because he's always been great about what games are playing today, but the email's coming out a little bit later. He might want to do tomorrow. Just something to have him take a look at. Yeah, because the consolidated email came out at 6:14 and it said that the games were at 3:30 and 4:00, so I missed them. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and seeing, that's part of our learning curve because it defaults to dumping it into the digest and then you have to, when you create content, you have to like, no, send it now. Yeah.
Just something to look at, all right? Anyone else? Seeing none. I failed, it's after seven. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Because I made Sue remembered, that's why, I don't blame it on her.
I make a motion that we adjourn tonight's business meeting until Wednesday, September 24th at 6:00 PM. Second.
Motion by Ms. Benetta, second by Ms. Goodwin. It's really because I asked about day seven, I apologize. All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned. We'll see you in two weeks. Thank you very much.